Tony just saw me. Yeah, I'll share his. Good evening. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our land.
This meeting is a special meeting of the Board of Education for the purpose of a presentation on the 2017-18 budget. Mr. Keegan will, once he's ready, will join us.
Well, good evening. Annette and I are going to work together on this because a number of the slides Annette could do a better job on than I can, so she's going to help me out here. So we've got a lot of items we'd like to talk about. Obviously, we'll look at our revenue budget. We'll talk yet again about foundation aid, funding shortfall. We've got our final tax cap and rates, the expenditure budget, and a few statistics on expenditure per pupil. We're going to talk about staffing and our fund balance and reserves, and the usual vehicle branding proposition, vote and election information, budget process timeline. So our estimated revenues of $158.07 million are based on the governor's budget proposal. I think that's particularly important to note, given that here in New York State, we're working on a late budget, so we don't know what our actual school aid is going to be. But I think it's a safe assumption that it'll be at least what the governor's budget proposal is, and that is an assumption. Looking at the variances, we did get some additional general aid, which is due to about a $1 million increase in foundation aid. And we are going to use a significant amount of fund balance in order to balance the budget, both because we have a late New York State budget and because we need to add back some things that have been cut over the last several years that are essential to provide a comparable education to other districts here in New York State. Key assumptions, as I mentioned, we're relying on the governor's budget proposal, and we are still hoping that if, when the budget is final, that we'll get additional foundation aid. We are assuming that the board will approve a budget or adopt a budget on the 10th that will be based on the tax cap. The biggest driving factor in the tax cap is inflation, as communicated by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. That inflation rate is 1.26 percent. Our building aid, there's two considerations. This is something I talk about every year that has not come to pass, but the state actually has the right to adjust our building aid for the interest rate difference between what we actually financed our projects at and what they aided us at. And that's been hanging over our head, and they've punted on that each of the last several years, and so hopefully they'll do that again, but that could be a reduction in aid. The other factor is that New York State Education Department's reconciling final cost reports, and we're waiting on the final budget to see what our actual building aid's going to be. So that could change as well with the final budget. And I should mention, although we're doing a ton of work relative to technology investment, most of that's being funded with Smart Schools Bond Act money, and it will not have any impact on the general fund. So foundation aid. To refresh everybody's memory, foundation aid was, there was a lawsuit in New York State called the Campaign for Fiscal Equity Lawsuit, where New York City led the way, but it involved all states, all districts across the state, where the state was forced to change the financial aid formulas and enacted a thing called foundation aid with the promise of providing school districts sufficient funds to provide a sound, basic education. And that was going to be phased in over a four-year period. And unfortunately, the economy has not, was not good in recent years, and as a result, the phase-in never happened. And to put this in perspective, I know these numbers might be hard to see in the back of the room, but in 2007/08, the North Syracuse School District was supposed to get $51.9 million. We got $38.1 million. That was about a $13.8 million difference. Over the 10-year period, we have gotten $145 million less than the Campaign for Fiscal Equity Lawsuit said we should have gotten, including, if you look at the 1718 school year, the year we're planning for right now, our deficit in foundation aid is projected to be $8.3 million. And that's why it's so hard to put together a balanced budget here in North Syracuse, and many districts across the state are experiencing the same thing. We're just not getting the funds that were committed to us as part of that lawsuit. Tax cap, as you know, in law, if a district wants to exceed the tax cap, it has to get 60 percent of the voters to vote yes and support that budget. If you stay within the cap, you need a simple majority, one more yes vote than no vote. And this is the state-mandated formula for raising taxes here in North Syracuse. And it contemplates a number of different things, but the single biggest thing is the allowable levy growth factor, that inflation rate I mentioned moments ago at 1.26 percent. So we're looking at a levy increase. There's other factors here, capital projects and pilots and the growth of our tax base, but we're looking at an increase of about $2.5 million or about 3.02 percent. And that's a $70 increase on a $100,000 home before STAR. And if it, if we, the board adopts a budget at the cap, people will still get their rebate checks. This will not interfere with that process. So what does that mean to our three towns, Cicero, Clay, and Salina? As you can see, Cicero and Salina, they have full value, they're full-value towns. They don't work on a partial assessment. Theoretically, a $100,000 home that's assessed at $100,000 in the town of Cicero or Salina, that is different than in Clay, where they have a partial assessment. And a $100,000 home in the town of Clay is assessed at $4,310. It's a little weird, and you can see it's, it impacts the tax rates. So Cicero and Salina would have a tax rate of $23.88 if this budget moves forward, if this tax rate increase moves forward. And the town of Clay would have a $559.37 tax rate per thousand. But as you can see, their estimated school taxes for comparably valued homes would be $2,300 roughly. And again, $70 a year or $5.83 a month before STAR. So this chart, you know, this is, we get a lot of conversations here in North Syracuse about our tax rate. Is it the right rate? And this is just a quick analysis or shows everybody what the tax rates are for all the school districts here in central New York. Those are the 23 component school districts in our OCMBOSI, and the green line is North Syracuse. We're higher than some, but lower than many, and, you know, that, this just shows that our tax rate is not out of whack. And as you can imagine, tax rates vary greatly depending on the values of properties, because the higher the value of the properties, the lower the tax rate's going to be. And so I thought this would just be a helpful indicator of where we rank in central New York. Moving on to expenditures, obviously, we have spent a lot of time working on our expenditures. I want to point out a few things. This budget proposal is a balanced budget. Our expenditures equal our revenues, as presented earlier, at $158.7 million. We're a people-based business. The green section and the blue section of the pie are our people costs, and we shouldn't feel bad about that. That's what we do. We put teachers in front of students, and it's a, it's a people-intense business. Those are our biggest expenses. The others that stand out are debt service. That's all the mortgage payments, all the debt payments on all the capital projects the district has done for its 10 schools and a variety of other buildings. We spent a lot of money with BOSI, about $14.5 million projected for next year. And those are some of the bigger expenses that make up our expenditures. You can see that we have increases in salaries and benefits. Some of that will be explained by future slides. I'll point out the debt service. Our debt service is down a little bit due to some debt payoff. I want to also point out that in the previous set of union contracts the district dealt with, our employees took over a three-year period, less than a 1 percent increase on average. And so their new contract, as contemplated here, is about a 3 percent increase for the bargaining units. And the slight difference in that is a step for some of our units and some of the investments we're making in people that we'll share with you in an upcoming slide here. Expenditure assumptions, I think I've covered a few of these, but our retirement costs are down due to the improved stock market performance for our teachers. That's our TRS, Teacher Retirement System. ERS, the costs are flat at about 15.8 percent of payroll. Fuel costs and energy costs, as everybody's known, we've had surprisingly low costs in fuel, and this budget, you know, anticipates much of that. As on our energy costs, we're in a three-year supply agreement, and so this reflects that supply agreement. And in BOSI, we're making some changes in our, in our expenses at BOSI due to the New York State Controller's Audit of the Regional Information Center, and we'll talk about that in a future slide. We're always exploring ways to work with BOSI so that we can save the district money and provide services we wouldn't otherwise be able to provide. Expenditure per pupil. So this is an interesting slide, and I want to just point out the subtitle to it. We spend less because we receive less. North Syracuse spends on average, or I should say, our spending per pupil is $18,672. We're ranked 669th out of less than 700 districts in the state of New York. There's only one district here in our BOSI that spends less than us, and that is part and parcel to the whole foundation aid issue. School aid is not distributed equitably, and I believe that when the foundation aid thing is fixed, you'll see that North Syracuse's spending is, is, will go up. The, I'm going to turn it over to Annette to talk about students with disabilities.
So this slide shows us that students with disabilities, even though our enrollment has decreased over the years, that the percentage of students with disabilities has increased. And with that, I think we need to point out that in many cases, the significance of the disabilities has also increased, and so programmatically, we've needed to address that, which we're going to discuss in an upcoming slide. So this past year, we launched off on a more inclusive model for servicing our special education students, with more of it being in regular classroom settings. So in other words, teachers and therapists more often going to the students and working jointly with classroom teachers rather than pulling students out and seeing them in a, in a setting off by themselves. So this new model is certainly aligned with New York State and federal expectations. It's certainly more in line with the spirit of the law and in line with civil rights for our youngsters with disabilities. This allows us to focus more on what's beneficial for all students in the classroom, and it allows students with disabilities to have access to the general curriculum, which is their right. We're also realizing that social-emotional development is positively impacted for students. They're feeling more as though they belong and are accepted, and with building this confidence, we are seeing an increase and should continue to see an increase in their performance. So with that, as I mentioned, this year, we launched off on a new model. In many cases, things were going well, and in, with anything new, there have been some bumps that we've needed to address, and we are looking to put significant resources in place for special needs students with this upcoming budget. We are looking to add five special education teachers at the elementary level, four at the secondary level. This will move us more towards a co-teaching environment. With that being said, there is a reduction of seven teaching assistant positions, and we've realized this year that teaching assistant positions seem to be somewhat fluid in terms of, we go into a budget with a number of positions estimated, and then depending on needs of students, sometimes it's necessary for us to create additional one-on-one teaching assistants, which we are faced with right now in terms of getting us through the rest of this current year. So I want to point out that with the seven less positions for teaching assistants, we have four retirements, and we have three positions that we're in the process of working on that will be from now until the end of this school year to service students who need one-on-ones. And with all that being said, those new hires will be with us until the end of the year, and then they will be the ones to go off on a, onto a preferred eligible list. We also need to look at some additions, 1.2 occupational therapists, one physical therapist, and one and a half speech therapists. By adding additional staff, it does decrease the amount of travel time and increase the student contact time, and many of these items here are in line with the special education audit recently done by Dr. Timothy O'Neil.
So as many of you might know, we, we use instructional coaches throughout the district. We had two working in technology the last few years and two working in literacy. And these are teachers working with teachers to support them in implementing whether it be technology or, or literacy programs and to build their, to help them with their instructional capabilities. During the next budget, we're planning on adding one more instructional technology coach, and this is going to be critical as we complete the wireless project at the high school and junior high, and we put a significant amount of Chromebooks in place. We're going to want to make sure we can support the teachers as this new technology is implemented.
In North Syracuse, we're fortunate to have a peer assistance and review program. This means that we have our own teachers working as consultant teachers who work directly with providing assistance and guidance to our probationary teachers. Because of the increase in the number of new teachers that we need to hire, as well as the fact that New York State not too long ago changed the probationary period from three years to four years, it has increased the workload of the consultant teachers. They can each have the capability of working with 15 teachers on their caseload, and we are projecting in this budget the need for one additional consultant teacher. So now I'm going to, the next couple of slides, talk about something that we've spent a lot of time focusing on, and since 2009, we had to make many cuts with co-curricular and, co-curricular programs in athletics. And back from 2009 to 2014, we had to cut many of these positions to balance the budget. In 2014 alone, we cut an additional 16 percent of co-curricular clubs and positions or teams out of the athletic budget. With this budget, we are looking to restore approximately $100,000 worth of co-curricular clubs and athletics. So I'm going to get into some details here. Let me start by talking about the Board Budget Subcommittee and my administrative cabinet. We had hoped last year to be able to do some of this, and it didn't pan out in terms of the funding and the budget. But we did talk about criteria that we would look at if we were ever going to be able to think about adding some of these things back in. And one of the criteria we looked at was taking a look at groups that fundraised all these years and that were also supported by donations and fundraising from the North Syracuse Education Foundation, as well as when we get into athletics, we looked at things like safety issues and concerns, and certainly all the way through this, we've looked at the number of students that would be impacted in a positive way if we were able to reinstate some of these. So for co-curricular, on the list is the advisor and co-director of Winter Guard, the drumline director at the high school. And it gives me great pleasure to say both science Olympiads at the high school and the junior high, we have had these students come and speak to us time and time again, and they've done an outstanding job in their competitions, and this really is an academic-based club, so we're pleased with that. FCCLA, it's listed on here as the high school and junior high, but since they were cut over the years when they did their fundraising, they've changed up the levels in terms of their club. And between now and the time that we ask the board to vote on this budget next week, we're going to firm up exactly where those activities are taking place, because there's a bit of a difference there. Math league at the high school and the yearbooks at the middle schools. So once we looked at all those co-curricular positions, we said to Don, "Don, please figure out for us, what is the percentage that we're adding back into the co-curricular budget?" And so we looked at a similar percentage for restoration of athletic programs. In some cases, it's additional modified teams, and in some cases, it's additional assistant coaches. And those conversations and considerations were taken into account with coaches with those teams, and we got input from them as well. So at this point, we're recommending a modified team be added for both boys and girls basketball, a modified team for football, the boys' green golf team. They have worked hard to donate the position back every year. Assistant, assistance for both varsity boys and varsity girls lacrosse, definitely a safety consideration. The JV girls tennis team, again, that group of students worked very hard to keep themselves funded. A varsity assistant for hockey, definitely due to safety, as well as varsity assistance for boys swimming and girls swimming, again, due to supervision and safety. Girls golf team, since the programs were cut, the number of girls in the girls varsity, girls varsity golf team have tripled, so there's a need there for an additional team. And with softball and baseball, a varsity assistant in each of those cases as well. I would like to add that we did keep Title IX in mind and that this does balance.
So I referenced earlier that New York State Controller's Office did an audit of BOSI, and so BOSI is the Board of Cooperative Education Services. And so one of the most important tenants of BOSI is that multiple people, multiple districts benefit from a particular service. And so in the Regional Information Center, as, as the technologies changed over the years, they had an approach where it wasn't unusual for them to offer a service to a district whereby that service was staffed with somebody who basically worked full-time in the district they were assigned to. So New York State came back and said, "You can't have a service offered to a district staffed by more than .6 FTE." So we've worked with, with BOSI, and we've, this is still a little fluid, but we're, we're pretty sure this is how it's going to work out, that we're going to cut or limit, or reduce six services we receive from BOSI and add five IT positions to replace those services. So although the overall, there is an overall cost increase, after eight, it's about $50,000, and we need to make these changes in order to be in compliance with the Controller's Audit's findings. In the area of security, it's been something that we have a constant effort at looking at our environment to ensure that students, staff, and community members in our buildings are safe. And we've made a lot of changes, both overt changes, things that are obvious to people, and some that are behind the scenes. A few projects that were particularly noteworthy are, we last year did the high school entry, made that a more secure single-point-of-entry. This year, we're doing the Gillette Road Middle School Entry and the Junior High Entry to make those a more secure single-point-of-entry. And next year, we're going to do Roxboro Road Middle School Entry, and that project is spiked out here as a separate project in our budget. And we continue to evaluate the staffing strategies to make sure we're providing optimal coverage for our buildings and staff. And finally, I'll mention, you know, we got the Bear Road Project going, and obviously, one of the key items in the Bear Road Project will be the organization of that building to ensure that the environment is as safe as possible for students, staff, and community members, and that that single-point-of-entry will be very secure. So I referenced earlier the use of a general fund, and it's a significant increase over prior year appropriations, and that's, that's the line there that's bracketed, the $2.8 million. So we started the year with about a $7.5 million unassigned fund balance. To, that is, those funds, by their nature, are not designated for anything in particular. They are the district savings account, and on a $155 million budget, to have a $7.5 million savings, sounds like a lot of money, but it's appropriate, given the size of our district. Five years ago, we were a district in fiscal stress. The state monitors the fiscal stress of school districts, and we've worked really hard to get out of that situation and build up some level of savings so that we can have a more stable budget process. And so what that savings is allowing us to do is to use some fund balance this year to restore programs, to have thoughtful conversations about changes we're going to make, and, and create a more productive and constructive dialogue around the budgeting process. We just didn't have that wiggle room five years ago. At the end of, when you, when you consider the amount of the tax levy, or the amount that we're appropriating to reduce the tax levy, we still will have an unassigned fund balance of about $4.7 million. That represents just shy of 3 percent of our budget for 1718 school year. We have reserves, and these, this is, these are monies that are designated for specific purposes. Tax certiorari is when a taxpayer contests the assessment of their property. Sometimes in those matters, they prevail. We've had a number of situations, and the board has authorized settlements, where, where people's property values, particularly commercial properties, were in, the assessment was in excess of the actual value, and we've had to actually pay back or lower their future taxes, and that's what that reserve is for. Workman's compensation, I mentioned, we're a people-based business. Well, one of the downsides of being a people-based business is that you incur workman's compensation expense, and we work with our third-party administrator to make sure that we have funds reserved equal to the amount of potential liability we have for the cases outstanding, and that's what that amount represents. And we have a capital reserve, and with the number of buildings we have, it's critical that we have a capital reserve so that we can move forward with capital projects and hopefully offset future tax levies to support those projects for local residents. And those reserves are expected to be about 3.86 percent of our budget at the end of this year. Vehicles, this is a tradition here, or it's, it's a well-established practice that we try to keep our fleet of buses 10-year, that no bus would be over 10 years old. Now, we're not 100 percent successful with that. We have some buses that are over 10 years old, but we're working hard to keep the age of the fleet down. And when, when a bus gets too old, when it gets over 10 years old, the maintenance costs become burdensome to the district. So we're buying, as we did in previous years, 10 new 65-passenger diesel school buses. We'll retire 10 as well. We're going to buy one 42-passenger school bus with a wheelchair position and air conditioning, and another 48-passenger school bus with air conditioning, and we're going to buy one plow truck. We have a very old plow truck that needs to be replaced. The cost of these 13 vehicles is about $1.5 million. That's about the same amount of money we spent last year, and the tax impact after transportation aid is about $2.10 per year for how assessed at $100,000 before STAR. So this is a very prudent investment, given the amount of transportation aid we get and the cost of maintaining and operating older vehicles. So in summary, we just can't emphasize enough how critical it is that this foundation aid issue be resolved. It's penalizing our community and our students. We need to have enough money to provide a sound, basic education, as was determined by the Campaign for Fiscal Equity Lawsuit. The preliminary tax rate, as I said, is a 3.02 percent increase, only requiring a simple majority, and the taxpayers will get their rebate checks. The budget increase, we've worked really hard on this, to have a budget increase of only 2.2 percent. And, and so that's what we're proposing, is a budget increase of 2.2 percent. And as we mentioned earlier, we're really committed to providing our students here in North Syracuse with educational, athletic, and co-curricular opportunities comparable to other districts in central New York. And I can assure you that every addition we talked about in co-curricular and athletics does not put any of our students in situations that exceed what their neighbors have. This just allows our kids to compete. Those schedules that we, that Annette shared with you provide additional opportunities for over 200 students that would otherwise be not able to participate. And so that's, that's really a, and relatively inexpensive and important element of this budget proposal. And then, you know, we've been forced to balance this budget using our fund balance. It's not sustainable over the long term without resolution of the foundation aid issue. So more to come on that. The vote and election, we're, our, our budget will be voted on on May 16th. Polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The usual polling places at Cicero-L and here at the District and here at the district office. If anybody is wondering whether they're registered or would like to register, they can contact the district office. We will be running a special registration event on Tuesday, May 2nd, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at the district office and at Cicerol. But don't hesitate to contact Connie Gibson, our district clerk, if you've got any questions on that. And then finally, today's April 3rd, or March, yeah, April 3rd, I apologize, that's a typo up there. April 3rd, special Board of Education meeting, next Monday, April 10th. We will be, hopefully, asking, hopefully, the board will be comfortable adopting the budget, and that'll begin the process where Annette and I will begin our roughly 30 budget presentations around the community. Any questions or comments?
Anything? Mary?
How many, how many buses do we have in our...
We have about 135 buses right now. And if you think about, because we triple-trip our kids, we get pretty good utilization out of those. You know, we do the high school, junior high, and then those buses go back out, do the two middle schools, and then they do the six elementary schools.
Thanks for doing such a good job, too.
You're welcome.
I had a question about the buses, too. What happens to the old equipment that...
Yeah, it's a great question. So, we used to just trade them in with our bus company. We would, frankly, not, it's a little easier to just have them take the bus. But we did some research, and we found that we can sell them. We use Auctions International, and we actually sell the buses, and we get a little bit more money for them. It also allows us a little bit of wiggle room as we're commissioning the new buses and bringing them in, to wait until we get all that fleet up and running, and then we go through and we auction off all the buses in one fell swoop. It works out good.
And all that equipment that we're purchasing, is that also through a BOSEs program?
It's got, it's a New York State contract, so everything on that list will be purchased under New York State contract, so it's pre-negotiated. The, because we finance our buses, or the way we finance our buses, the way the aid comes in for those, we get our transportation aid. So it's very appealing to us to keep the fleet current, and because it's so highly aided.
And then I have another question. It's about the slide where it shows how much we spend per student. So is this, how is this determined? Is this a formula BOSEs uses?
It's simply, no, no, it's simply the total budget divided by the number of students. Now, the numbers don't work out exactly that way because of, you know, certain adjustments and whatnot, but that's in concept what it is. It's the number of, it's the total budget divided by the number of students.
Okay, so, it couldn't be that another district would have given, you know, have a different formula?
No.
Okay.
No, and actually, you can see that this data comes from the New York State report card data, so it's consistently calculated by New York State. Yeah, it's a good point, and we could debate this one, you know, for a long time. But I look at this chart, and I say that our rate is not wildly low, and it's not wildly high relative to the rest of the...
Point is, we don't have...
Yeah, this is about foundation aid. Yeah, this is, our taxpayers are paying their share. They're doing everything that they said they were supposed to do relative to, we're living within the cap, they're allowing us to increase the levy at the cap. But job number one is, we've got to get our foundation aid, and that deficit is what's causing us to spend so much less. Yeah? Yep?
So what will happen if we don't have a budget from the state with our timeline?
Well, it's funny, I might actually defer to Mike on this. This is my first time, as a business official, not having a on-time budget.
In my early life, this was not uncommon. I gave Don some great hope tonight and reminded him that one year was late July when we finally got a state budget. The advantage now is that the legislators are not being paid. In that year, 2001, they were being paid, so they have an incentive to pass this thing. If you've listened on the news, what the issues are, nothing to do with education, for the most part. It has to do with the age of juveniles, when they will be prosecuted as adults. It has to do with the Uber lift coming upstate, and it just sort of put a freeze on the education aid. One of the excuses is, well, we have to wait and see what the federal government does because of alleged, supposed cutbacks coming there. Well, you could wait a long time for that, so...
Charter school debate also?
I haven't heard, Paul, but that may be, yeah?
I heard that today.
So, there's a lot of issues, and again, you're down to three men in a room now. This is not the whole legislature debating, it's gone down to that infamous that George Pataki was going to get rid of, three men in a room. That didn't work out well either. So this could last a long time. Mary, we're going to vote on May 16th, like every other school district in the state. Everybody will be in the dark, and we hope that when there is finally a budget, it'll have a little boost in that foundation aid so that we don't eat up as much fund balance. But every district's in the same boat, that the date is fixed, we've got to do it, so... Anything else? Okay, thank you, Don, thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item three, comments from the audience. I have from Connie, the district clerk, 10 names who wish to address the board. I need to remind people, when you sign this form, at the very top, it said, "Issues involving particular students or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting." I see eight names that want to address CNS wrestling. Any comments you make, without mentioning names, that identify somebody, are not permissible. So even if you just want to mention something coach, or something this, or something that, if it is identifiable, those comments are not allowed in open session. So I caution all, especially the last eight who want to speak about the wrestling, if you are going to make any comments that will identify, even through just a position, title, or anything else, will identify a person, that is out of order. The best thing you can do, if you have your statement in writing, is to give it to Mrs. Gibson, she will forward all of those to us. You can send an email to her as district clerk, those will all be sent to us, and we will get all of your statements. But we cannot have them read here in open session because of some grave risks due to privacy concerns about employees and staff. That not an open meeting discussion cannot be about students or staff, that's correct. Now, I just, I want to make one other... Again, if you're, if you're going to advocate for a certain person, for a certain position, that is not going to be permissible, because it identifies who that person is. No, 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 as I said, you can submit everything in writing to Mrs. Gibson.
I really have to submit it, sir.
Because it's not permitted in an open forum. That's not our rules here alone, that's every place. You cannot make comments about public employees in open session. There are statutes that govern that. That's not a, that's not a local policy of us, believe me. Okay? You can get your point to Mrs. Gibson, she gets it to us very quickly. Today, we saw several emails about this situation. I'm trying to protect the district by making sure nothing is said here in open session where somebody can come back at us pro-Con or otherwise.
Somebody in the voice.
Correct. It doesn't matter, doesn't matter, okay? You cannot make the, right, it's not a debatable point whether you can or cannot do it. You can't do it. So, again, I would ask, everything go to Mrs. Gibson in writing, we will get those. Contrary to one rumor, there was no action tonight. I know there was something on that web this weekend, there's going to be a vote tonight on this, no, that was never the case. This was a special meeting for budget discussion. All the personnel items are scheduled for next Monday's meeting in regular session, as they always are. So if you think there's going to be a vote on something tonight, you're mistaken. That's why getting things to Mrs. Gibson in writing will allow us to have time to see those things before next week. So I would ask you again, if that is what you intended to do, please do not come forward, just give those statements to Mrs. Gibson. There are two other speakers who say they want to address the budget. The first is Phil Clery. Where did Phil go? Oh, there he is. Sorry. And I remind Phil and the next speaker as well, everybody, this is three minutes, Mrs. Gibson has the timer, and when that timer goes off, please bring your comments to a hasty conclusion, right up front, right at the microphone, Phil, so you can be picked up on the recording. Connie, you ready? Okay, Phil, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Phil Clery. I apologize for talking fast. I'm an employee of the district, I'm also a lifelong resident graduate of our schools and a taxpayer. I'm here tonight to talk about our budget. Now, we heard our proposed budget that's based on the governor's original proposal. But as you also know, that the budget is late, which is unprecedented in the last few years. So what's happening right now in Albany, they're debating a budget extender, which means, then, in the absence of a budget, we will not go to the governor's proposal, but back to last year's funding levels, which is terrible. Now, we're all talking about getting foundation aid back, and what the governor's doing, and what the New York State Senate is doing, and there's a whole lot of finger-pointing going on from the three men in the room and everybody else. But the fact of the matter is, we have to complete our mission here in North Syracuse. We have to educate our kids and give them the best future we can give them. And right now, we're not. We have that graphic that shows how low our spending is, and it says it's because what we're given isn't enough. And that's true, we're not given enough. But there is another alternative, and that's taking responsibility for our own community, going above the cap, and funding our schools the way we think they should be funded. And it isn't about just how our kids are doing now, but certainly, we should say that, you know, these kids will only be seniors now, they'll only be in kindergarten now, they'll only be in fifth grade right now. But we should also consider the fact that in our community, not only are we having trouble giving our kids what we want for them, but future residents are making decisions about whether they want to come here or not, because they know that we're at the bottom of the list or close to it. And that is not going to serve us well. As a resident and taxpayer, I'm concerned about my property values, and the thing that brings good people who want to raise a family to this area, our schools are well-funded, and a community that's willing to back them. So I beg you, please, don't wait for Albany to do it, because they haven't in the past. We must do it ourselves, and we will work with you to pass a budget that funds the things we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next name is Steve, and forgive me, is it B-A-R-A? Bara, thank you, wishes to address the budget. Again, Steve, three minutes, and Mrs. Gibson will time it.
I won't need it. I just want to thank the board again for considering the restoration of all the co-curriculars. In particular, we have a good representation here tonight from the Winter Guard teams. Our junior team, just recently, with a number of very young children from the district, took second place in the state area championships. Our JV team surprised a lot of people and took first, and our varsity team right now is ranked number one in the world. So we're heading into championships this weekend in Dayton. We'd like to see that program, and it's 52nd year now in the district, be restored as quickly as possible. That feeder program is so important to all the kids and the continuation of the program. Thank you.
I will, I will go to the eight names remaining, again, with the same caution. Jeremiah Butler is first. Jeremiah, can you make your comments in accordance with the rules, or do you wish to submit?
I'll try, and...
Okay. I will.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremiah Butler. I'm a senior at Cicerone North Syracuse High School, and I am a member of the CNS wrestling team. I've been a member of the program for seven years. It has been recently brought to my attention that we are having an unexpected change with the direction of our athletic staff. On the behalf of the wrestlers, referees, parents, and friends, who are all here tonight, we're all very upset and confused with the recommendation given by the athletic department for the next person to work with our wrestling team.
Getting dangerously close, Jeremiah. I would respectfully request that you stop. I mean, we know what you're talking about.
Okay.
And it is identifiable. It is to me, and that's what matters.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Please give that statement in full.
Do me ask, Gibson?
You've got it on your phone, so I know you can email it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Forgive me, Devin Flood, am I saying that correctly? Okay. Mike Ella, boy, I'm having trouble reading the handwriting. L-I-S-E-S-A-Y, did I spell that correctly? Mike?
Yes. I have to make a...
Okay, is that, is there anyone who wants it that's on the list that does want to comment? Okay, otherwise, please, if you've got your statements on the phone, please give them to Mrs. Gibson, okay? Thank you, thank you. All right, we will move if I get this thing back to life.
My name's not on the list, but I address...
No, you have to be on the list in order to do it. Okay, understand, again, please, put it in writing.
It's not, it's not about the...
No, 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 that was it. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment record of two individuals with no action to follow. Do I have a motion for executive session? Ms. Cash, Mr. Marizio, in favor? Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.